Would everyone please rise for salute supply.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Basil, would you do a roll call, please? Mr. Basil, here, Mrs. White.
Present.
Mr. Doty.
Present.
Mr. Kurtz, here. Mr. Rathke.
Here.
Mr. Speed.
Here.
Mr. Fedowski.
Yeah.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Martino.
Here.
I was asked to remind everyone, if you haven't already signed in, please do so before you leave tonight. There will be an executive session following the committee of the whole meeting, and a special voting meeting will be held after this meeting to discuss employment issues and labor relations. And we'll determine at this meeting with the full board here whether we will hold a voting meeting on the closing of a building, on having a hearing to close the building issues. Let me discuss kindergarten for a second, and I don't know that this has been done before, and what I say maybe unpopular with some people, but I'm going to say it anyway. This board experienced an unfair public backlash due to the February 23 kindergarten presentation. With a March 16 deadline, Mrs. Torsia made a presentation to the Curriculum and Instruction Committee for the first time just three weeks before that deadline. Other members of the board attending the subsequent voting meeting had no direct knowledge of that presentation, so in essence, they didn't know about this until that night. So a member of the public marches to the podium and declares the proposal a no-brainer. Other members of the public are skewering the board on social media, and that's okay, because it's the public's right to do so. But this board, however, is required to use our brains as well as all the data available, and all the committee said that night was that three weeks would be insufficient time to make an informed decision. Sort of the same thing we're saying tonight about closing a facility, that we don't want to rush into it, that it's not sufficient time. Members of the committee requested additional data, such as more than a one-year comparison, which tends to skew our result. And as it turns out, some of the data presented by Mrs. Torsia was erroneous. For example, the $60,000 guesstimate for increased food purchases has no bearing on our general fund that goes into a cafeteria fund, not the general fund. The $93,000 savings from elimination of midday buses may be overstated. The presentation tried to show the need for an extra half-day of kindergarten in part by a slide showing the need for additional reading help required by grades three to five in middle school students, the suggestion being that another half-day in kindergarten would preclude that necessity. My question instead is if 12% to 15% of third to fifth graders are already receiving additional reading help, why do 14% of middle schoolers still require it? It says something to me about our third to fifth grade reading help. And I'd remind everybody that some of the classes cited, especially the middle schoolers, did attend a full-day kindergarten. So it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have better scores or better reading. But the most egregious misrepresentation was that full-day kindergarten will cost nothing. Nothing costs nothing. Our declining enrollment mandates that we reduce staff accordingly, and for 2015-16 that equates to more than a half-million dollars. Expanding to full-day kindergarten spends that savings. Moreover, the presentation did not discuss how the ensuing years will be paid for, years in which our fund balance is already projected to be in the red. I can only imagine the public outcry where we'd expand to full-day kindergarten, only enough to eliminate it again in a few years. Peasars, pension costs, continue to dramatically increase and drain our budget, and until the legislature acts to correct this issue, the only way for the board to impact peasars is to reduce staff relative to enrollment. We also just had a facility study completed which shows several million dollars in needed repairs in the not-too-distant future. One of the members of the public asked about peasars. About 14 years ago, then-Governor Ridge decided to increase the legislature's pension and in turn the teachers' pension. Then they made a decision to not fund it because the stock market was doing so well. But then the stock market crashed in technology, and all of a sudden, peasars was underwater. And we've been trying to make up the difference ever since. And that has nothing to do with anything local, under local control. It's all the state. And our new governor says, as far as he's concerned, there is no pension issue. So how much relief you're going to get from the legislature remains to be seen. Keep in mind a few facts: The Pennsylvania Department of Education neither mandates nor funds even half-day kindergarten, let alone full day. There are conflicting studies on the merits of full-day versus half-day. There are as many pro as con studies as you can imagine. And you can do your own research simply by Googling pros and cons of full-day versus half-day kindergarten. It was suggested that I bring all those studies with me. I didn't do it. You can do it yourself. Just Google it, it'll come up. And for the past several years, including last year, there was a proposal to eliminate kindergarten entirely. We're not doing that. In fact, this time a year ago, this board sat here and was told, hey, the deadline to sign up for kindergarten's in a couple weeks. We've got to make a decision on whether we're keeping kindergarten or not. Going forward, that's not happening. Ten years or so ago, prior Daniel Boone school boards and administrations went on a spending spree, building unnecessary extravagant buildings and signing unaffordable unsustainable labor contracts. Even with all the belt tightening, bond refinancing, et cetera, this district, for those of you that don't know, is still approximately $88 million in debt. $88 million, which will be paid off in the 2030s at a cost with interest of more than $120 million. So anybody that thinks we've got extra money to spend, I don't know where you're getting that from. We have a lot of money to make up. This board, if everyone will recall, was sworn in less than 16 months ago and seated under a budget projection which included, this is a year and a half ago, included a $3.5-million deficit and a proposal to eliminate kindergarten entirely, eliminate sports entirely, eliminate music entirely, and eliminate some educational programs while raising taxes the maximum amount allowed under Act 1. Instead, half-day kindergarten was reserved along with sports, music, and educational programs without increasing taxes. I think this board's done a great job. Now, maybe the public doesn't want to give us that credit. I think you should. The bottom line is there's simply not enough time to properly evaluate the proposal as presented, and in fairness to both the board and the public, the proposal should have been researched more thoroughly and proposed months ago if the administration thought it was that important. Perhaps instead of a rushed judgment, the public should look at what this board's accomplished in just over a year since being seated, and at the very least, give us some benefit of the doubt in our decision-making. Before I go any farther, the procedures for public comment are that after each item, you'll have time for public comment by coming to the podium, signing your name, stating your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. I believe there are other board members wanting to discuss kindergarten.
I can only say that I haven't seen the presentation, I haven't seen the numbers, and therefore can't comment on whether or not to bring kindergarten back or not. My experience when we took kindergarten from full-day to half-day was it saved the school district $444,000. So I'm not sure how you bring that back without incurring a similar cost or a more expensive cost to do that. So if we're looking at attrition, there's a cost that has to be measured here, and it could be an opportunity cost as well. If you're looking at declining enrollment and therefore furloughing of staff, that's a savings that the school district needs to take into consideration. Keeping that staff on hand for full-day kindergarten going forward does not afford the school district those savings, both in terms of salaries or in peasars benefits. And as a result of that, it's adding cost to the school district, in my opinion. So I think it's, I would be uncomfortable at this time bringing that thing back, but that's for the board to decide.
Martino, I just wanted to say that I certainly had my disappointments with the presentation, and I spoke privately with Mrs. Torsia about that, and thrown it to the public and in front of the whole school board. That's a discussion that we still need to have at Curriculum and Instruction, and certainly at the Finance Committee. I think, yes, maybe there's semantics in the words of it doesn't cost anything. I think the term was, her proposal was rather unusual. You're correct that we would not save money by cutting more teachers. But I think Mrs. Torsia looked at it as a way to give back to the community that seeing cut amount cut to our programs with zero tax increases for past three years. So if she could keep expenses the same, but bring program bracket, I think that was her idea. Now, you might have screwed that, and you're correct that there would not be any cuts that we could have from that, but I think that was the gist of the proposal.
Is there any other board comment?
Yes, I'd just like to add that Mrs. Torsia's research did create the foundation for future discussions, and for that, I appreciate her efforts.
I basically would want to add to what Mrs. White said, is that I do think it is a topic for discussion, and I think the administration's job is to bring some board proposals that we can consider. I don't think the timing, you can still write to reduce kindergarten registration in the suit of the timing, but I think we certainly keep it as a topic for potentially next year or future years.
Yes, I agree, and I think that we should have lifted kindergarten back soon. I think it's important we see what the General Assembly does in addition regarding the governor's budget, to see what money's coming into the district, but it does need to be a developed plan, it needs to be well thawed out, but it is a discussion we should have, and we should have at some point in the near future.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to add a whole lot new there, but I thought that if we're going to discuss closing a building, and we want to take the time to investigate that, to make sure that that's a good decision, we should do the same thing with kindergarten and give it the time to think that through thoroughly. And I'd like to see it, if we can bring it back, I'd like to see it stay. I don't want that to just be like on one year and off again, and that would just not be good for the community, so.
Any other board comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment?
February 239, Lanah Blain, Douglas Falls. I had to re-amp a little bit now that I'm assuming MECE is off the chopping block for tonight, is that correct? I'm going to confirm that before we all leave, and then it comes back.
We will discuss that during the meeting, but it seemingly is off the chopping block for this year.
All right. I want to say, I want to thank the one person on board, I emailed all of you two weeks ago, the one person that replied to me. It is a proven fact that full-day kindergarten programs better serve our young learners. For children to grow and thrive in kindergarten, they need a few simple things. They need attention from quality teachers, we have that. They need developmentally appropriate activities created to directly address their educational needs and the time to implement them. They need time. We don't have that currently. They need time to build relationships with their teachers and for their teachers to know them as learners. They need time to play with other children and develop appropriate social skills. They need time to work with math manipulatives daily, not three times a week. They need time. Time is something that they are being robbed of. Countless studies and good old common sense have proven that laying a strong foundation for children at the beginning of their educational career prevents future problems. What's the biggest expense school districts have? Not teachers' hours. It's special education costs. And guess what prevents? Additional referrals, special service needs, and special education classrooms, a strong foundation. Children whose skills can be remediated early before they have to start playing catch-up. It's far more expensive to repair a problem in the future than to prevent it from ever occurring. Mrs. Torsia showed you a great presentation on how this could be done. The reason that it was hurried was not how we usually do things here. The reason it was hurried was because she realized it could happen this year because of certain teachers retiring and certain things that could only make it happen this year. That was pointed out clearly in the presentation. Then the idea to close MECE was thrown out of the blue as a smokescreen to get everybody to forget about full-day kindergarten. I for one am tired of Daniel Boone making the headlines for these horrible negative reasons, and I think it's time that we have something positive put in paper to make people want to actually come here and live here and educate their children, because the children are why we're all here.
My comments will be brief. Amy Hicks, 109, North Review Drive. In the discussion of full-day kindergarten, one thing that just amazed me when I come to these meetings is I hear discussions, a lot of talk today about shuffling children as it's easy enough to shuffle children like it is to shuffle cards. You discuss closing programs as though how it affects data and how it affects the bottom line and the cost, and yes, we all understand that there's a cost involved in these programs. However, the one cost I never hear you discuss is the cost that cutting programs or not restoring programs has on our children, and that's the cost that ultimately you need to discuss, that I never hear, and that's what disappoints I know the people in the audience today. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that. In Curriculum Committee, we are working hard to restore curriculum.
Yeah, I would love that in the Curriculum Committee.
Monica Lacy, 4995, Schoolhouse Court. I just want to say on behalf of the community and parents that have kindergarteners, Mrs. Torsia, thank you for even thinking about or even giving them the idea, or the idea to even put it on the table again. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Jennifer Harding, 103, Boston Drive. From what I've been hearing, ICA's been adding classes for their full-day kindergarten program. We're losing kindergarteners to them. We're looking at birth projections, we're losing young families moving into the school district that are sending their kids to private schools instead of gathering those kids and getting them to come to our school district. We need those kids in our school district, and we can get them to come to here. We need full-day K. I know, it's hard, but it's something. There's only two school districts in Berth County with half-day K, and we're one of them. It'll bring the kids back, it'll bring those numbers up. We need to bring the families in, the young families. It'll come here, spend money here, bring the businesses in here.
Thank you, everybody.
To the best of my knowledge, may I comment on that, please? Immaculate's kindergarten registration goes up, but just as kindergarten. They're not staying in Immaculate, to the best of my knowledge. They don't have two classes of anything else except kindergarten.
My name's Rebecca Bell, and I live at 1424 East Main Street, Douglas Falls. I'd like to first start out and just thank the board for your service. I think it's a very unpopular thing these days to be on the school board, and so I'd thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
I do want to say that I think it's very important to people who have young children that we have full-day kindergarten. I think it's also important, from a community perspective, that we have full-day kindergarten because it makes the district more attractive for young people. If people have the choice of moving into Daniel Boone or moving into Twin Valley or Exeter or one of the other places that have full-day kindergarten, you're talking about very small geographic changes and they're picking school district. And as an alum of this fine institution, I would like to see this institution be restored to the place where people want to be, not where they want to exit from.
Hi, Jo Michner, 102, L. Portland. As a full-day kindergarten teacher in a neighboring school district and also a parent of a kid coming into kindergarten, I really encourage you to go into one of the classes with a half-day class and observe the kindergarten class, and then come into my classroom over in Berthborough, Twin Valley, into a full-day class. There is a huge, huge difference. You're talking about roughly two hours, am I right, of instruction time for a half-day class versus six hours in my classroom. So it is a major, major difference. You can't make this decision solely based on financial reasons, you have to do what's best for the kids as well. So I would open my door to you to come in and observe a full-day classroom. Please do that.
What's your name again? I'm sorry.
Jo Michner.
Ms. Michner, I'd like to take you up on that opportunity. Wouldn't you be able to connect after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
I'll show you some, may I?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Mr. Martino, can I just say though, too? I think, again, there's a perception that this board doesn't feel full-day kindergarten is a positive thing. I don't think anybody sits on this board and says, "Full-day kindergarten is bad." We all think it's a good thing. We're tasked with balancing the needs of all the students of the district and trying to make that work. And I think, actually, the last year and a half, as Ms. Martino said, we've actually been trying to concentrate on that in saving money and not having the budget scares and not cutting athletics and not cutting band and not cutting dinner. And nobody's sitting here saying, "Full-day kindergarten's bad." If we bring it back, can we bring it back to stay and make it work and still take care of the needs of first through 12th grade as well?
Thank you, Ms. Fedowski, and I'll repeat, all that was said was there was not enough time between then and March 16th to make a decision.
Hi, Kelly Hepther, 820, Anthony Drive. I would just like to thank Mrs. Torsia very much for doing her job, for looking into ways to make the school better and a better place to educate our children. I think that that information is always vital to be put out, no matter what time it is told to you, and that you should always be open to new ideas. So thank you for actually doing your job and making the school board and the school and everything focus on the education of the children.
Moving on to the superintendent's report, Mrs. Torsia.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. We have a lot to celebrate this evening. I would like to start out with recognizing a student from the high school. I'm very proud to announce that two Daniel, two students, I'm sorry, I'm very proud to announce that two Daniel Boone students have been selected to perform with the Pima All-State Chorus. They are Sophia Gilareto and Ryan Young. The All-State Chorus is highly competitive, and it has been over 20 years since a singer from Daniel Boone has been selected. So congratulations to these very talented singers. Mr. Kurtz and I had attended the Academic Challenge today, and going into the Academic Challenge, the Daniel Boone team was undefeated, had zero losses, zero ties, I believe it was 12 wins at that moment, and unfortunately, it did come down to, between them and Wilson and Daniel Boone did take second place today. But congratulations to our Academic Challenge students. This weekend, the high school students participated in the BCIU Berks County Art Show, and I would like to congratulate the following high school art students for their accomplishments. Brittany Dangler, 12th grade, BCIU Permanent Collection Award. Mariah Elser, 10th grade, Goggle Works Summer Camp Scholarship. Miki Flanagan, 11th place, or I'm sorry, 11th grade, 3rd place, ink pen drawing. Kenzie Ochus O'Neal, 12th grade, Honorable Mention, Ink Pen Drawing. Tim Tran, 10th grade, Honorable Mention, Computer Art. Audra Bishop, 12th grade, 3rd place, pencil. Jenna Picoretta, 10th grade, Honorable Mention, pencil. Brittany Long, 12th grade, Honorable Mention, Illustration. Matt Dugan, 11th grade, Honorable Mention, Altered Image Photography. Virginia Higgins, 10th grade, 2nd place, Sculpture. Zachary Dickinson, 12th grade, Honorable Mention, Sculpture. Jessica Gramling, 12th grade, Honorable Mention, 3D Open. And Stephanie Severs, 12th grade, Honorable Mention, Fabric Design. So congratulations to these students as well. We'd like to congratulate tonight Mac Starnashak, an 8th grader, and I apologize if I did not pronounce his name properly. He made it to the Pennsylvania State National Geographic Bee. He was the middle school GOB winner, and after taking the test he needed to take following his win, that qualified him to go to Harrisburg for the state competition on March 27th. So congratulations to him. And you know me, with the sports realm, I can't leave them out. We have a boys' club ice hockey team, and the boys wrapped up their regular season this past weekend with a 7-1 win over Calico, finishing 13-1, first overall in the league, and 15-4 overall in the Berks League. They are number one seed, and they played Fleetwood over the weekend, which they won, and now they moved on to the semifinals, and they're playing tonight at the Sandtander Arena. So quite an accomplishment for our club ice hockey team. They were also awarded a spot in the Flyers Cup for the second year in a row, and the Flyers Cup are the top 45 teams east of Harrisburg who battle it out to play the winner of the Penguins Cup, which is west of Harrisburg. And lastly, eight Daniel Boone players were elected to be in the All-Berks All-Star Team who will play the CPIHL All-Stars. That's the Dolphin, Lancaster, Lebanon Counties, and Lancaster on March 27th. So congratulations to the boys' ice hockey team. If you haven't gone out, it is quite the experience, as I was there the night that we had the snow squall. And we have a very, very supportive student body that goes, so it becomes very interesting at the boys' ice hockey games. So congratulations.
They actually won their game tonight.
They did win, so you know that. Last but not least, I'd like to recognize our Berks Career Technology students that were elected for the second quarter Student of the Month, and we have Alyssa Ferguson, Automotive Collision Repair. Jacob Shanley, Automotive Technology 1. Brooke Steele, Cosmetology. Carl Levingood, Electrical Occupations. Shamira Nichol, Horticulture. Jackson Darlington, Masonry. Jared Land, Service Occupations. And at West Campus, we also had a few. Marissa Burkhardt, Advertising, Art and Design Technology. Cheyenne George, Photo Imaging Technology. And Gregory, I want to say Tucci, but I know that's not correct, it's T-A-U-C-C-I, and I apologize, for Recreational and Power Equipment Technology. So congratulations to our Berks Career Technology students. Next meeting, we will be acknowledging our students, our high school and middle school students who have participated in the regional TSA competition, and many of those students have qualified for the state round. So it's a long list, and we'll also recognize the first-place winners, I believe, with certificates. So thank you. That completes my news around the district. Mr. Martino.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsia. Has anyone given a report on the United Way campaign?
I certainly can. Forty-nine staff members participated, and a total pledged is $7,753. At Amity Elementary, we had $2,445, 11 participants. Birdsborough Elementary, $661, 6 participants. District Office, 4 participants, at $199. High School, $1,591, 9 participants. Monocacy, $835, 7 participants. Monocacy, $835, seven participants. And the middle school, at, raised $2,022 with 11 participants. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsha. Mrs. Bikes, Blazer Foundation update?
Yes. I'm pleased to report that the Blazer Foundation's 25 days of Christmas night goes to $10,000.
Oh, that's great.
And each participating school building will receive 50% of what they were able to sell. And the 50% of the buildings earmarked, earned will be earmarked as programs for their building. Secondly, the Blazer Foundation and the Daniel Boone Middle School are still in the processing of raising funds for the 8,000 dollar matching grant from the Post Down Health and Wellness Foundation for the middle school greenhouse. While continues to go well, greenhouse should be able to be constructed during the summer months to be used for the 15th, 16th school year. If anyone's inclined to want to help Blazer Foundation meet that goal, please do contact the foundation at blazefoundationboard. And the Blazer Foundation will be promoting their second annual teacher grant program. Details will be distributed this month. The program allows for teachers to apply for $100 to $500 grants for innovative classroom programs to enhance the curriculum. Some examples from last year are AP Chemistry Lab Kids, Learning Support Books, Audio DVD for eighth grade, sixth grade nonfiction, high-interest reading, sixth grade motion rockets for science, fourth grade magnetism and electricity equipment conversion kits, third and fourth grade high-interest nonfiction guided reading, and fourth grade science series and parallel circuits. They're continually seeking community members who are interested in making a positive difference to the students of the district. And the Blazer Foundation Board members are members of the community, independent from the school board, please remember. And they work to promote, support, and partner with the Daniel Boone area school district and its community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bikes. Any board comments or questions on Mrs. Torsha's report or Mrs. Bikes' report?
Yes, I'd just like to say I attended, I have the privilege of attending the middle school, Amity, this weekend. That was an incredible performance by those students. I, it's middle school and it was such a great quality show, but I'd just like to recognize them for the part of the day.
Yeah, I apologize. Thank you.
I believe they're done performing, is that the case?
They, they are.
That's true.
Yes, Sunday afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Anything else from the board?
One question, Mrs. Torsha, isn't there, is there a jazz festival this weekend?
I believe, and I would have to defer to the high school. I know that we have something going on, that there, there is something musical going on this week. I can't speak specifically as to what it is.
Just wanted to take the opportunity to stop by, find out about that and stop by because our music program is superior.
Any public comment on the report by Mrs. Torsha or Mrs. Bikes? Seeing that, I'll move on to curriculum and instruction. Mr. Kurtz?
All right, thank you, Mr. Martino. Item A, the curriculum on the Instruction Committee meeting report. We heard Mrs. Torsha's presentation on full-day kindergarten and that took up most of the meeting. There was also a very brief discussion of fundraising during the academic school day. I would like to take this opportunity though to talk about some of the positive things that we're doing in Daniel Boone. We heard earlier, I shared this frustration, how so many of the headlines about Daniel Boone are negative. Well, I would invite everybody here and everybody in the community to come out to our next Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting. It's going to be on Thursday at 5:30, which I realize is a little bit early. We're having another one later in the month on March 23rd at 6 o'clock. And we did a lot of great things last year in terms of expanding curriculum within the district. We are offering many more AP classes than we did when I was in high school. And these courses allow students to go into college and take the credit that they've earned in Daniel Boone and put that toward their college degree. They can graduate early, they can save thousands and thousands of dollars by doing that. Last year, we added an SAT prep course. This is all stuff that isn't covered by the news, but it's making Daniel Boone a better and better school district. There's a lot of positive stuff happening and I hope you get the opportunity on Thursday or at the end of the month, you can come out and help contribute to those meetings. A lot of exciting things are happening and I can't wait to see where we go in terms of adding more courses and strengthening our curriculum. It's also worth noting, I believe, that Daniel Boone is the second poorest school district in Berks County in terms of information that we get from the state. However, our AP math scores are the highest in the county and that is something, an achievement to be proud of, and a Daniel Boone achievement to be proud of. So I encourage you to come out. We're doing a lot of work with the curriculum to make it stronger. That concludes my report. I look to see you on Thursday.
Let me add, Mr. Kurtz, that I saw a post on Facebook that said that Daniel Boone was ranked 496th out of 500 school districts. And rather than just accept the article at face value, I clicked on the links and that was based on a survey and most of the items in the survey included responses from eight to 12 people, which is nowhere near a statistical justification. So it was, it was an erroneous report.
I think it's also worth mentioning, I talked about a lot of college, programs where students are going to college, we're also programming the VOTEC to offer some incredible opportunities for students who may not choose the typical, or not typical, I'm sorry, who may not choose the college bound route. And even for the students who do, the VOTEC schools offer an incredible number of programs that are very strong and we're looking to incorporate those programs into our Daniel Boone education at an even more fundamental level. So we are doing some good things and I'll close on that. I've taken up a lot of time talking about the curriculum and that's why we're here.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Is there any board comments or questions for Mr. Kurtz?
I'd like to just add a comment to what Mr. Kurtz said real quick, since we actually do have public here and some reporters. As far as the BCTC, which is the VOTEC program, I know when I was in school, VOTEC was pretty much like shop and cosmetology and it's where the kids went that were usually troubled kids or didn't really like to go to school or whatever. But the programs that they offer are phenomenal and it's neat as a rep to get to see the programs every month when we meet there, we tour different program. And last month was graphic design and imaging. And, I mean, they have state-of-the-art mats that, you know, are just phenomenal. They probably have 20 or 30 in the lab. They design marketing materials for people. Like the, the community can actually come in and hire them to do their marketing stuff. They put, they come up with the ideas, they produce the materials, and then in the next round, they have the printing presses and the laser printers and all that to do it. It's really phenomenal. And as far as the curriculum, they have a program, they have multiple programs, but one of the, I think the exciting ones that a lot of people don't know about is their Mechatronics Program. And you have to have a 3.0, I believe, to get into it. The, it's, it's a, it's an articulation agreement with Penn State. So when you go to VOTEC, in 12th grade, you take classes at RAC towards the three, you know, the, the basic classes towards an engineering degree. Your first year out of high school, you go to RAC and you get some more basic credits. So you spend your senior year and one year out of high school at RAC. You then go directly to Penn State for two years. You get your engineering degree, your certificate, your degree comes from Penn State. So the employers see an engineering degree from Penn State. And you have one year paid for by basically the school district and you have one year paid at RAC tuition prices instead of covering $25,000, $30,000 at Penn State. I think that's a phenomenal opportunity for kids in today's society with college host where they are. They also have programs with Bloomsburg and, and they're working on some other programs for kids in health occupation services. So they're really worth checking out. If you have kids in middle school or going into their freshman year, take time to go visit the school, go to the open house and see what they have to offer because it's not just cosmetology and shop. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to just add to that how there are so many opportunities within Daniel Boone to prepare students for college and not only to prepare for college, but save drastically on college. So it's very exciting. I'd like to add, one of the CTC programs, I'm a 2012 Daniel Boone graduate, proud to graduate from Daniel Boone, one of my friends went to BCTC for culinary arts and is now going to one of the best culinary arts schools in the country. So there were a lot of great things coming out of Daniel Boone and the opportunities for trying to get them there and keep them there and promote them. So that's what's happening in the Curriculum Instruction Committee.
Any public comment on the curriculum report? Seeing that, we'll move on to Building and Grounds. Oh, I'm sorry. We've got your time this time.
Just real quick, I personally agree that Daniel Boone has a great program. One of the reasons that we moved here two years ago, I looked at the score, like you said, when I researched, I saw the math was off the charts, our science was great, our reading was above level. We wanted that. So we talked about all these opportunities in the middle school and the high school. I'm sure children in the elementary level will love Spanish or German or French, anything that could give them an intro into another language, any other culture, anything like that. They're, they're sponges. They soak it up, they love it, I know it. I had, my middle child went to a full-day private kindergarten, which had Spanish in it, and he thoroughly enjoyed it. And he picked it up so quickly. So instead of bringing language in the middle school or in the high school, there's a possibility, even if the teachers themselves can dedicate 30 minutes a week, if we can get Spanish, French, German, anything that they're interested in, that would be a great opportunity for all our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign, please? Thank you. Any other public comment? Moving on to Building and Grounds, Facilities Report, Ms. Fedowski?
The facilities committee met on March 2nd. We had a pretty, pretty full agenda, but it was, I think, a productive meeting. Just a couple highlights. The, we are on the road with Key System Upgrade and there was an analysis, I believe, this past week, unless it was canceled due to snow, of what doors needed to remain open and those kinds of things. So we're moving forward with that. We talked about the MEC parking land drainage issue and we're doing some research, I shouldn't say, wait, the staff is doing some research on the land development and seeing if we have some information there. We also talked about sidewalk replacements at the middle school and will be seeing probably some more on that in the future. We did get a, an equipment list, an equipment and vehicle list, and the facilities manager is starting to go through that and look at what we actually need and don't need. And one of the things that will be a recommendation coming forward from the committee is to put a couple pieces of equipment out for resale, out to bid to sell and in turn purchase a infield machine that'll help them take care of the baseball fields. We'll be looking to get rid of some equipment that they, they don't use and the cost should kind of equal out, but it will enable them to, to be more efficient at their job and do a better job. Basically, we don't really have the right equipment for what needs to be done. So they're looking at some of those things. I think the biggest thing, and I want to mention because we wanted to discuss it tonight, the issue of the security guards at the high school came up. And the reason that came up is because Mr. Spall's been doing a great job of making sure that we're not paying bills for, or invoices for things we don't have contracts or agreements or were approval for. And there was not an agreement with MNG Security. So he asked for one, had Facilities Committee look at it and asked for a recommendation to execute that to the full board. And before we did that, the concern was, the question came up, how did, I mean, I know that there was always, I think, a part-time security guard or crossing guard or something, but I guess a couple of years ago, I think actually, 2012, 13, when we had some issues at the high school with some racial threats and, and some issues, there was more security guards brought in. We can't find necessarily that was something that was authorized to be a permanent expense for the board. So we were trying to look at what was authorized by the board, what is actually needed before we sign any type of agreement. So obviously, there needs to be some input from high school administration, but the question was, do we really need three full-time guards at the high school every day? And then if we do, what exactly are they doing? Because some of us have been in and out of the building when there isn't a guard at the front door, the door is unlocked or, you know, things like that. So we just want to make sure if we need them, that we're getting the services that we need from them. So.
At this, at this point, what direction would you like? I, I know the high school administration is able to answer some questions for you, but would like some more direction as to what the information is that you're looking for exactly and, and, you know, just to move forward.
Let me just add something. So a couple of years ago, when that extra security required at the high school, it was to address a specific need and it was temporary in nature. It was, and that's the way it was presented to the board, that's the way it was approved by the board. It was never intended to be a long-term, permanent placement of these extra security personnel. And I think the fact that it's remained is probably a byproduct of the change in administrative leadership here that it just wasn't ever addressed. And no, no formal agreement was presented to the board at the time other than what was discussed at, with the board by the superintendent to say that they felt at that time, we needed to have a few extra security personnel to process the students coming through the doors, make sure that things were safe. And when the, that issue resolved, I don't know if that's the right word, but when, I guess there was a sense of normalcy back at the high school, the expectation would be that the security detail would not be there anymore. So I was surprised to learn it was an ongoing expense for the school district of $92,000 a year.
Let's say you have the owner of energy here, not even ask some specific question, let's say you have.
I think we need to have a larger, oh, sorry.
Well, I, I don't know that my question is really for the security, I mean, for the owners of MNG. I think my question is, before I enter any type of agreement that, that's going to cost $92,000 a year, I want to know what exactly they're supposed to be doing? What, what, what are, right, what's the scope of work? That's all. And if, if the scope of work that was decided two years ago, four years ago, is it still necessary? Can that be reduced? Do we really still need that? And I think that really comes more on the high school than, than the owner of the company.
Right. I, I just have a little bit of information from looking into the past, we did have our very own security guard hired. And that was in, from 1996. And then an additional halftime person was also hired. And upon their retirement is when I understand that the administration, the past administration had decided to, instead of incurring the cost on our roles, to then replace them with the MNG. So that's part of my understanding of what we, we had.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I, you know, I'd still think that's a good idea. I don't, we're not in the security business, we're in the education business. So I don't think it's the role of the school district to be employing security. But that's why we hire MNG in the first place. But I think my concern as a board member is, do we still have a need for the detail that we have? And that has to come from the administration. Clearly, we didn't have a need prior, but, you know, certain circumstances are going to arise where we can bring more personnel in and if it wanes, then you can let that, that personnel go. I'd like to ask, I don't know if the Facilities Committee is going to recommend to have this discussion or this conversation, but in terms of security across the entire district, not just at the other schools, in light of some of the tragedies happening around the country? And whether that security should be armed or, I mean, with these school shootings. It may sound funny, but when you have, when you have shootings, who's going to respond? State police? How long does it take them to respond? I mean, we need to be looking at the safety of our students and it's not a laughing matter. So I'd just like to have that discussion. What are our security plans? They're not, they should be public, we should discuss them publicly, but are they updated every, every few months? I mean, that is a discussion I think we need to have and I don't think it's something that we should be. We talked, we talked a couple of months ago about having the state police come out to do a review of the high school and I don't think that ever happened. I think that's something we should do.
We're on the waiting list, along with many other school districts. Yes. Unfortunately, that's, it is, right, it's.
Yeah, Mrs. Torsha.
$2,000 trip was short across the state, that's what that issue is.
Mrs. Torsha asked what the committee would like and I think the committee would like a recommendation. a recommendation from the administration as to what's needed, but justification as to why.
I think if we could get, and I'm assuming somebody knows of maybe doing that, what's the understanding of the scope of what they're doing now? I mean, my understanding is there's three, there are three employees here a day. Are they staged at certain places? Do they have certain times of here and certain times of there? And then, my question would be, is do we actually need that scope of work? And if we don't, what's the scope of works that's actually needed daily? And then, if we have additional incidents, or how can we get other, add to that scope of work? I don't know, anybody else in the committee has other things they want?
I'd like to hear a recommendation from the administration at some point, what they believe is necessary.
Right, the high school administration.
Yeah.
They're ready, they're prepared to be able to speak to that this evening.
Fire them up.
Beyond the scope of work, you know, what their responsibilities are. And, you know, what is their, you know, to Mr. Curtis' point, what is their level of resistance? Okay? And do we want to have, you know, that at the high school? If it's just physical, or then you're looking at the employee to make sure that they're, that they may meet those skills and at least be able to apprehend somebody or.
Yeah, just caution the board, we don't go into specifics in the public on that, that's a conversation in the executive session.
Okay.
But I agree with what you're saying.
I'd be glad to respond to what I've been able to find out up to this point, in those limited days, in the school, not yet officially on duty, thank you. But, we, thank you to Ms. Weber, she was able to coalesce a listing of kind of the daily activities. But, one of the questions that I, that we need to look at in fiscal responsibility is, can we provide the same service at a lower cost? Okay? Because clearly, what I've been able to see in the five or six days that I've been in the building and walking the building is that there's a rapport with the security staff, they do create a stabilized, safe environment, at least the feel of a safe environment, and we should dive deeper into seeing, you know, is that just the feel, or is it really a skill set that we would be secure if something happened? I'm not qualified to answer that question, but I think it's a good question that we go into. And I had a few questions about getting some education as I go, about why the security staff was put in place. But ultimately, the end state that we're looking for in the high school is that our kids have a safe place to be, that education is not compromised, so not that I feel that we're in the business of security, but if that is the most cost-effective way to help provide that environment, then I think that's something worth considering. If I understand the economics, I mean, it's around $31,000 a person, and I know they use multiple people for the year. To have some of those same activities supported in the building, we have the problem is teachers, teachers cost more than security costs. So, we could look at it in that aspect as well, to provide, some of those things happen to happen. The morning activity has to, you know, directing the traffic, taking parents to locations, so forth, so there's a larger list, and I'll be glad to support that, I mean, not support, submit that to the facilities committee and the finance committee. And then, the other thing, I'll give you three, you know, options on how we can do it, what's costing us, what could be more feasible, and what would be the catalog version of it. And we have those conversations and continue to really get the best safe environment we can for kids.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. Anything else from, sorry, you've been standing there a while.
It's all right, it's good for my bones, I'm stressed. I'm Mark Pellicotti, I'm the owner and founder of M&amp;G Security. To give you, just for a brief description of what our guys do throughout the day, first of all, you have mostly retired police officers acting role enforcement or something that are working up there. Three of my guys, if you hit the right day, you got three black belts. The one guy's a seventh degree black belt, was one of my instructors for years, and he used to run juvenile detention for Berks County, until that got shut down, minimized, whatever you want to call it. Anyway, we're at the beckoning call, and of course, we're in a transition period now with Mr. McKnight taking over, because now my guys are running it, before they were used to Mr. Henkel, how Mr. Henkel wanted things done. And as I always say, and I told Mr. McKnight, he's the king of the castle, he'll do what he wants, okay? But nine out of 10 times throughout the day, there's a guy at the door, and he's not supposed to leave that post, he's supposed to stay there at the door. And the other two guys make their rounds or in the lunchrooms, and you have from 10 to 1:25 or what, Mrs. Rexford, what's the last lunch there? I forget what period it is.
I think it was over by about 1 o'clock.
Okay, all right. So, you know, you have two guards tied up in lunch. Or, I provide the district, at my cost, but they belong to me, digital handheld units. The principal has one, there's one at the secretary's desk, and my guys on duty have one, so we have communications throughout the school all the time, where they're going to just push a button and then start talking. Now, the transition period with Mr. McKnight, he's going to tell us how he wants us to do things. I don't go to him, and I never did this to any principal, or superintendent went in and said, this is how we're going to do it. Well, you're my customer, I will do what you feel it needs for the school district. Mr. McKnight can have a perfect security plan, I want A, B, and C officer here, and it's all going to go to hell when it hits the fan, pardon my French. You know, it's, you're never at the right place at the right time, no matter how darn perfect we set things up. But I will say this, my guards do have a good, they've all been there for a while, and they have a good reputation with the students, a good rapport, so if Mr. McKnight comes out and says, hey, can you go get this kid, I don't know who he is, here's his name, my guy's got it, you know, they're learning the kids very well. So, and plus, I'll say this, this is my 15th school year that I've been in business. I've never had one workers' comp claim, I've never had one lawsuit, nothing. My guys know, unless it comes to a life or death situation, they don't touch the kids, and they will treat the kids the way they want to be treated. That's how it is, this is how it goes, it's part of the standards I set with my business. So, if at any time the committee wishes to meet with me, I'll be glad to sit down and go over anything, because it seems like we have a more active board. This is, 15 years, this is the first school board meeting I've been at. And it's okay, I can do, I can come to these meetings, I'm glad to get to know you, and do what has to be done. You know, if there's ways that you just want to go, it's not me to tell you how to spend your money, okay? Matter of fact, I'll say this, I think it was two or three years ago, was the first time in the history of this school, or, I'm sorry, of my business, that somebody from the school district said, Mark, can you sit down with me and ask for my input? She's now the superintendent.
I appreciate that, you know, if the facilities committee does want to have you, now we'll get in touch with you, but, and it's not, like I said, it's not.
No, it's business, and that's fine, it's business.
We're just trying to figure, you know, Mr. Small's doing his job, and we're trying to do our job to figure out, you know, what really is needed and how we put that.
Right, and I'm more than happy to work with you, I appreciate your time. Unless somebody has a question for me, I'm starting to lose my speech from my accent, so I want to give hope to the public.
Your pleasure, thank you.
Sir, excuse me, one minute, does anybody else on the board have a question?
Well, I do have one statement. As part of the facilities committee, it wasn't, please don't take it as a critique of your company, we have nothing but, you know, heard nothing but good things. It's just that Mr. Small ran across an invoice for $92,000 that no one here authorized, so.
I don't know, I don't know that there was, I don't know that I issued, made a total number.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've been incurring this cost, and it's never come up before the board for a vote, and that's the only, that's really the reason why it's here, and then by extension, then we've asked the administration to look at it, so, yeah, please don't look at it as a negative.
No, sir, I'm just glad I came, and I'm seeing, since the last week or so, my phone's been ringing, and I'm screaming at Mr. Rathgab, and.
Mr. Rathgab.
Yes, sir. So, no, I appreciate the input from the board, I, you know, I, my intentions are good to be here, and I'm willing to hear the input from the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Small, I have a question for you now. If I'm understanding this correctly, you do not have a contract?
Correct.
So, we need to make a determination before too long whether to sign a contract, and for what, and for how much? But in the meantime.
I guess you could make a motion to authorize.
Well, I'm assuming we're going to keep security in place until we find out otherwise? I mean.
Just authorize for 30 days?
Yeah, I would be in favor of doing something on a limited basis until we can get some hard answers from high school administration, what needs to be done going forward, and what kind of liability we may be opening ourselves up to, but I'm very leery on doing anything on a long-term basis.
Well, put your thinking caps on, we're having a voting meeting after this meeting, so somebody can make a motion for 30 or so days to do something while we make a decision.
And then, just to, our next facilities committee meeting is scheduled right now for April 9th, I believe, that's the sixth. Because the first one that I think is Easter holiday.
Right, and that's why I had TBA, so.
Unless it's those again.
Well, right, I mean.
Is that, small, April 9th or 11th?
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment on the Building and Grounds report? Saying none, we'll move on to finance. The course approvals, budgetary transfers, the annual stipends to be paid, all of this is in the packet for the board to vote on at the next scheduled voting meeting. Mr. Beigel, do you have the finance committee report?
The finance committee, about two and a half hours ago, and we basically got a quick curation from Mr. Small regarding the Health Trust Consortium and our role in it. One of the things, just as a reminder to the board, that we're trying to do is get a sense as to what our claims history has been like as part of the Health Consortium versus what we're paying into it, and whether it'd be a worthwhile option to look outside of the consortium for our healthcare providers. And we're having some difficulty getting to the data that we need to make that kind of a decision, and the business office has suggested using an outside third-party consultant that would help get us the answers that we're looking for, at least the data that we're looking for, so we can make an informed recommendation to the board. We have unanimous consent amongst the four finance committee members to reach out to the consultant that had been suggested by the business office, and make contact, I think is the best way to describe it, not actually formally start a contract, but get an estimate from them as to how many hours that they think it would take to assemble the data that we needed, and begin that work. So, we want to bring that to the board, and just make sure we have the board's authority to move forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Beigel, any board questions?
So, you want to vote to explore what that would cost?
Well, I don't want to, we're not really voting for anything, we're just trying to get board consensus here that we have, the green, the business office has the green light to reach out to this consultant and get a better number for us. I think we're all a little uncomfortable at $175 an hour as an open, sort of T&amp;M contract to do what they will, and then they come back and tell us, it's going to cost you $20,000 to do this, here's my bill. I think I'd like to get a better sense from him as to what an estimate time would be in terms of doing that, but we would need the board's authorization moving forward to actually reach out, he would need to reach out to our Blue Cross provider to get the data, and that would have to be done in the board vote to give him the authorization to do that.
One question I had, I don't know if you're going to have the answer, was in the first few years of this, of the inception of this consortium, there was a buildup of fund balance to, is there a way to extract what money that we contributed? I guess what I'm getting at, if we go somewhere else, are we leaving all the extra money that we contributed to build that fund balance behind?
Yeah, you leave it, go ahead. Okay, so, that was the first part of the meeting, that was a very brief part of the meeting, the second part of the meeting, we talked about enrollment data, and capacity of buildings, and whether or not now is the time to close a building, or when is the appropriate time to close a building? And the consensus from the board was to, from the committee, I should say, was not to recommend to the board to make a, to vote on a proposal, to have a hearing to close the Monocacy Elementary Center. So, we won't be bringing forth that suggestion to the board. If the board wants to do otherwise, that's the board's decision. But I would like to get permission from the board to post the slide deck that was presented to the public, so that that data is available for the public's consumption and discussion.
I think that's important, as many people as were here tonight, there's a lot more than that that live throughout the district, so the information being available should be fine.
Is there any objection posting the slide deck? Okay, so, that's what we're doing, and going forward, I think what we're going to do in the next finance committee meeting is probably discuss a more detailed timeline for the administration to begin looking into the closure of buildings as enrollment continues to decline, and what that timeline will look like, what are the considerations that we need to review, which would be looking at different groupings of classes, transportation, which buildings would close at a certain threshold of students, and things of that nature. So, we'll begin working on that task at the next finance committee meeting.
Just for clarification, on the Health Consortium issue with the consultant, in the interest of time, because that could be costing us money, do we want to add that to the special voting meeting tonight, or do we want to wait two weeks?
I'm not sure exactly what we're going to authorize him to do, quite frankly, at a particular cost. Mr. Small, do you have any input on that?
I think what you're looking for is for me to contact the consultant, get an idea of the timeframe and what the estimate would be to accomplish what it has on proposal, and then bring that back, based on what he tells us, then we'll, the finance committee will bring back a recommendation.
Okay, and quite frankly, you know, in the interest of time, Mr. Small, if you wanted to bring that information back and share it amongst the entire board, you know, I don't think the finance committee would object to that, so the board, depending on which happens first, a board meeting or a finance committee meeting, we can take action and move this issue forward. It doesn't have to wait until we have another committee meeting, and then we'll bring it back to the board a week later, or whatever that timeframe would be.
Bring it to whatever venue.
I should have that information tomorrow.
Yeah, well, if you would share that, then, because the next board meeting's in two weeks, as opposed to the finance meeting. And the other issue on the building closure, so we are not going to vote on that tonight.
There was no, there was not a recommendation from the finance committee to consider that to the board, but again, there's only four people on the finance committee, so if you want to make it official, so. I'll add that I don't support closing, this year there's five votes, it won't be approved tonight.
Well, under agenda edits for the voting meeting, if anybody wants to add that as a motion, that's up to the members of the board. Yes, Mrs. Beigel?
Can we make sure that the building capacity numbers are published on the website also, and the student enrollment data that we get at the year-to-date, so our public could actually see the trends? Or is that not acceptable?
I think all the slides.
I think that the whole slide presentation.
Regardless, in our public documents section, I think that would be valuable information for the community to have the lengthiest of discussions. If you're seeing in our board packets, I don't think there's anything in there that's private or confidential, they're just numbers. Well, you know, we have a spreadsheet of enrollment data going from 1999 through 2015, I've shared that spreadsheet amongst the board, we've talked about it at Norzio for the last two years. I would suggest that the finance, the business office just publish that spreadsheet in a PDF up on the website.
You're referring to the, Mrs. Beigel, you're referring to the ones where it shows all our own, and then out of, the ones that go out of the district as well, or the cyber school one?
Yeah, I'm asking that all the information that we get at these monthly meetings that show the trends are made available to the public from month to month and year-to-date, including there are.
Since we've reached the subject, I had two questions as a member of the public, which as a member of the public till I got shut out. And the first one was, have we ever taken these projections, this projection model, and reverse engineered it to see if you would look back over the last five years, how accurate would that projection model have been had it been employed five, six years ago? The second question was, when it comes to building capacity, is that building capacity figured based on our policy for recommended classroom size? So, I'm just going to throw out a number here, just to make the illustration. Say our classroom can fit 30 students for kindergarten, okay? There's no way we're going to pack 30 kids into a kindergarten class, it's like herding cats, they'll never be able to do it. So, my question is, when we look at this building capacity, what are we looking at? The physical capacity of the room based on like the fire marshal or is it based on our stated goals for classroom size? Because I think the classroom size, I wouldn't want to go over our policy, stay with our policy and calculate our capacity based on that, not based on how much, how many students we can fit in a classroom.
Yes, I think if you look at the data that's up there, the capacity is based on the numbers that were provided by the school district as it relates to students in, maximum capacity of students in a building. So, that's a number that's derived, I believe, by the architects of those designs and whatever criteria they use, X number of kids per kid you're gathering in class as opposed to how big a room is per se. I'm not sure what benchmark that is other than that's the information we provided. But I think if you look at the data in the slide deck, you'll see that there's always been a cushion between maximum capacity versus actual enrollment. And, you know, that, it's been, it varies anywhere between, I think, 500 and 1,000 students in any given year. So, I'm sure to your question or the point that you're trying to make, which is, well, there's the maximum capacity, which is a number on a building that an architect comes up with, versus how a building is actually used, right? So, there's, and so your utility of a building may be that you max out the building before you ever exceed, you ever reach that building capacity in terms of what the number is. So, that's the cushion.
That's it. Because I'm looking, if you have, I remember a couple of years ago, I think, I can't remember who made the presentation, that physically per, you know, the guidelines of how much square footage each student had to have, you could only have a certain, to say, 28 kids in the class. However, we, our policy was the most that we were going to put in that classroom was 22. So, my point is, we should be basing the capacity of a building based on our policy, not by the physical space it could be. I mean, that's the more fair...
Well, it's another consideration.
Well, I think we should make sure we're talking, you know, we're comparing apples to apples here when we're, you know, what is capacity?
I don't know if it's changed in the past year. A year ago, Ken Smith had said that the capacity numbers we had were based, were originated with PDE based on footage. So, that would fit right into what you're saying, that they're just looking at footage for students.
But that's, I think, part of what the administration has to come back to us with as part of that plan.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't think that anybody on any of the committees or board said, "We're going to close this school and put 30 or 35 kids in a classroom." I don't, again, I think that's just something people think.
But you know, perception is reality in many cases and I just want to make sure that we're reassuring the public that we're not showing, you know, 30 first graders into a classroom just because the fire marshal or PDE says we can't.
Well, the process we followed with APC was, we did look at vacant rooms and we did also look at rooms that were being used in this consortium, they illustrated the point that some rooms are pull-out rooms for IEPs and you have music rooms and you have, you know, computer labs and things of that nature. So, it's not, any consideration for building closure is not going to be based on strictly maximum number of bodies in a building based on square foot mile. I mean, that's unrealistic. It has to be what works.
Thank you.
I have a comment about the building closure and the capacity discussion. Is, has there been any consideration to selling some capacities, the reserve capacity that we're holding in this building and shuffling administrators around instead of students?
There's been talk about that, but as I thought was expressed, the Facilities Committee is waiting for a response from Amity Township about the usage of this building and how it impacts the township.
And I thought that that was for leasing, so I apologize if that's where we're at. I thought it was for...
You're looking at selling?
Yes, I think it should be considered at this time. We have reserve capacity, but there's 350 students can be housed here or taught here. Then wouldn't that eliminate the discussion? And we've come to the conclusion that in private discussion, that this costs about $300,000 a year for us to maintain this building. That was the number we were looking for to generate revenue from our leasers. We shouldn't be holding real estate just to have a venue for leasing to people.
I guess that can be looked at at any time, but since we have those students here, I don't know how that impacts our student enrollment.
Well, it affects that reserve capacity number. This is in discussion, I said, having 350 students in reserve. So, if we shuttered another building, we shuttered Monocacy, which is 450, we're talking about having 700, 800 capacity in reserve to open up a building whenever we need it.
I don't know, I don't know how selling this building impacts that.
But we don't have to close a building because we have reserve by shuffling the admins around.
I'm not following what you're saying.
How about we discuss the committee on some numbers? Because apparently I'm not communicating it very... I don't see the point, I feel like a hoarder. Feel like we're closing another, the concept came up, closing another building so we can hoard more space in case we need it. That's why we're holding this, we're hoarding space.
Personally, if we were to close another building, I think at that time, I would certainly look at potentially maybe selling one of them. I mean, I think you could start that discussion. I don't know that I'd do it as it's your only building, personally, I'm not speaking for the committee, that I would look to do it while it's the only building that we own that's closed. I can tell you that we did when we brought the broker in last year, that we talked about with leasing or selling. I mean, they were looking at potentially, you might be able to get a million or two. You owe nine on it. I mean, do you sell it?
Well, we won't know really what it's worth until, we won't know what the market value is until we put it on the market.
In the interest of, in the interest of time, since this is a whole new subject, I think that should be included in the study. I'd suggest maybe you bring it to the next Facilities Committee meeting.
I will then, thank you.
But any other questions?
I had to do that one, I assume we're done with that topic, but in the Finance, I know there was a little confusion on the BCIU bus contracts because it does seem to go back a couple of years and there's different price points, but it seems to be the same school that we're busing to, so I was a little confused in that as well, so.
In the interest of time, let me answer this. Mr. Small has discovered that we're transporting people to different schools. And when he tried to find out who approved these contracts, he's getting this. Nobody's accepting developing the contract or approving it. So, right now, there are three contracts as presented that are going to have to be approved. Mr. Small, is there something I'm missing here?
It's the same contract, three different price points throughout the year. Started out at one point, through the end of, I believe, through the end of December, then through a different level, but then because of the requirements for one of the students, because of the program that the students involved with, it started recently with the daily rate increased.
But all we're looking at approving at the next meeting is to complete the school year. Going forward, we need to look at where the students are placed, who's transporting them and for how much.
I simply, once again, need a contract in place to substantiate the expenditure that we're making.
Is it not my understanding that we originally had started with Klein's Roads and that then it got pushed to the IU for these severely autistic children that we're transporting?
The transportation was originally provided by BCIU and then when I got in the midst of discussion, I offered Klein Roads the opportunity and they gave me the second grade.
Okay.
Mr. Basil, did you set a date for the next Finance Committee meeting?
We do not have time, Mrs. Machino.
I take that as a no. Are there any other questions on the Finance Report from the board?
I'll just throw out, sort of financial, I just emailed you all out BCTC's budget, their current budget. We'll be voting on that at the end of the month at BCTC to Denver to this home district. So, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Dowsky. Is there any public comment on the Finance Report? Yes, Mr. Cottle?
Shane Cockle, 830 Guyer Town Road. I just want to make a quick comment on the comment of potentially selling this building. I think it would be at this time, all the things that you guys have on your plate is to add another time-consuming venture into selling this property. When it was first brought up, closing this, there was a lot of studies and the amount of money that the district would get would be minimal if the amount of student population would reverse and you would start gaining your population back to go buy a piece of property, which is going to be very difficult if you have to go back to build a building. It costs $19 million to build the Monocacy to get even, if you get half of your money back, $4.5 million for this, which at this time would be a very difficult thing to do, we're still lost millions of dollars if we have to replace this building and still it would cost the taxpayers more millions down the road. And the longer we keep this building, the better off we are in, even just say you do want to sell it down the road. Every year, the market keeps gaining and gaining and gaining. So, in five, 10 years, if you end up closing another building, you know, the real estate market might be at a point where you could sell it and at least recruit more money.
I think what Mrs. Basil is saying is that if we're going to do a comprehensive study that we should include all our buildings. I believe that's what you were getting at.
Each year we hold it, each year we hold it at close to approximately $300,000 over the course of 10 years, that's $3 million. At some point, we have to sell some of our real estate, we just can't keep shuttering buildings and holding them. We're talking about one more next year, another one in a couple more years, just whole, whole buildings? Is that what the community would want? It seems like a disservice to just go into, you know, real estate investments.
Well, I think holding it at $300,000 is a better decision than selling it and losing it.
I'm just recommending...
No, no, I understand, I'm just thinking with all the, all the things on your plate, I think, bringing in real estate agents. And of course, you know, a real estate agent's going to say you can get X amount of money so they get the listing. They don't care if it sits on the market for a year or two.
Why should we? Why do we care if it sits on the market?
Mr. Cottle, without arguing the merits now, I think what we need to do, the first thing we need to do is find out what the actual capacity is for each of our buildings. I keep hearing there's space at the high school and some people dispute that. I believe there may be space at the middle school and some people may dispute that. We need to find out. And then we can make a determination.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Julia Oldson, 637 Jefferson Street, Birdsboro. I just wanted to emphasize a point I heard made by the board. And it is a little disappointing when we come here and hear a presentation given in a Finance Committee where you're talking about capacity of buildings and it's not based on, those capacities are not based on what our own policies say about class sizes, they're actually based on either what an architect says is the capacity of the building or what the Department of Education says is allowed by law to be in a room and not on the actual policies that we can give at any time and see that, you know, for kindergarten and for second grade, that we're expecting to have a maximum of this many kids. It should become more apparent to you when we come to this meeting and we hear that Amity Elementary Center has 93% capacity and we're all looking at each other wondering where that other 7% kids were supposed to go and we think that number sounds crazy. It becomes clear to me why there's discrepancy with what we expect and what you're hearing when I understand that the numbers are not being based on the policies, based on something else. So, I would hope that if you do present again, we'd have something more representative of what we're expecting to see in the classroom and not just what's allowed by law in square footage and learning, so that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
I want to comment on that real quick. So, I think what people need to, two things to benefit the public, it's a good question that you brought up. I think first is, the board and the committees cannot deliberate behind closed doors, okay? That's why we have the meetings, that's why we come here and to discuss these things in open. So, we're not supposed to be behind the scenes meeting and discussing things, it's a violation of the sunshine law. So, sometimes you've got to come forward with an idea and it may not be complete and all the data may not be complete, but you have to start the discussion with what you have. So, you get the good questions and the feedback and you can take that pushback and go back and reanalyze what you're doing to get better information. It's a process, it's an iterative process, it goes forth and it takes months to do, but you have to start the process. So, I think that expectation needs to be put out there, that people understand when we come forward, we bring forth an idea, it's an idea, that's all it is, it's just an idea. The second piece is, as it relates to, we'll talk about capacity one more time, I've looked at the way we've configured our school district over the last 15 years and it's constantly shuffling, okay? We've opened buildings, we've closed buildings, we've brought in new buildings, you had all the kindergarten, the Monocacy kindergarten first and now it was split up between MEC and AEC and MEC. And so, we're constantly shuffling where we're housing certain classes at any given time period based on circumstances, our enrollment, our growth, what buildings we have available, what we don't have available. So, it's a constantly moving target and our guidelines, our policies are things that can be changed. They can be changed from 12 students per classroom to 22 students per classroom. So, but the number that's coming from an architect or PDE based on square footage is fixed, it's a fixed number. So, that's the, for me, that's the starting point. And then depending on what the recommendation might be from administration, maybe they say, "Well, look, we're better served putting all of our kindergarten students in one building." Now, based on that and how many kindergarten students we should have in each classroom, that's going to impact what the enrollment's going to be in that particular building. But that could change, three years later, you could say, "Well, no, we're going to split kindergarten up almost three different buildings." Well, then the whole configuration, discussion of capacity changes all over again. And, you know, I understand that, you know, for the public, that can be a frustrating experience because you're reading something in the paper or you get a snippet of something on social media, but for the board, it's always, it's a constantly moving target. And so, every year is going to change based on what our overall enrollment's going to be and the dynamic of that. If we have 7,000 students, our discussion of what building capacity is going to be for buildings is going to be a lot different than you have 3,000 students and you have to talk about the same buildings.
What I'm saying that's frustrating for the people that are sitting here is not necessarily what anybody's seen in the paper. Well, I'm sure that is frustrating for some, but what I'm saying is that... Well, I'm sure that is frustrating for some, but what I'm saying is that when you are sitting there and giving a presentation and saying you have 90% capacity, you have 90% of capacity in this building and 60% in this building and 93% in this building, where we go there and those buildings are crowded and I don't see where another 7% of kids can go. And I'm just highlighting that Mr. Wolf just brought out where that discrepancy is, why we look at the same information that you're looking at and we don't see the same thing. And that's where the frustration is, is the gulf between this side of the building and that one.
But if you heard the follow-up to Mr. Wolf's statement, we did say we were going to look at actual capacity.
Which is why I said all I was doing was highlighting what he said. I wanted it not to go unremarked by the public.
Thank you.
Can I just say though too, that frustration is what brings the outcomes, right? The frustration of you sitting here and listening to that and commenting on that gives the Board direction. I think that's what Mr. Basil was trying. These are really the work sessions for us because we can't sit at home or at the diner or whatever or on the sidewalk and talk to people, you know, the Board. Right. But if you bring this to us as a potential problem, we can look and find a solution. But oftentimes what we want to hear is people want to find the problems. They don't really want solutions. They want to complain that they don't want what needs to happen. What may need to happen is the building needs to close. So if everybody comes together and talks about the minute details, the problems, they can get solved as a community and as Board. So yes, thank you for that. But I know it's frustrating, but that's the beginning of building blocks to make the puzzle.
Yeah, when I first started on this board, we had constantly asked for a five-year, a five-year model. And we also, Mr. Sullivan, who was here for a short time, brought this model in for allowing us to be able to look ahead at the birth rate and how that is going to affect us in the years to come. So no longer are we reacting to the students who are coming. We can actually plan. And I think what you're seeing, Mr. Basil, that is very right to bring up this conversation is it may be uncomfortable, it may be unpopular, but it's sooner or later we're going to have this conversation. And as soon as you can get it out and get people used to the idea, once you break down the barriers of something's going to change, oh my God, you know, I don't want to go here, I don't want my student to go there, and then you look at, here's what's in the best interest for the school district where we can take more money and apply it to programs and students rather than keeping the lights on in the building and people at the front door. So I think the exercise that Mr. Basil presented to me, the information is pretty stark when you look at the long-term forecast. Now, whether those numbers have changed, you know, of course, you know, we have, we're only early in the process, but it's a conversation we have to start sooner than later.
Moving on to personnel, all big personnel items are listed on the special voting agenda and there will be time before that for public comment on personnel. Under Programs in the Board's PAC, under Monthly Enrollment Student Data Record and Other Data, is there anything that needs to be discussed?
I think that, Mrs. Bates, did you have a question with regard to the summer band camp? That is a camp that our music teachers conduct for their students who are participating in our program. And whether in their middle school band or the high school band, they all come together. And it's a set rate that the students pay and it covers all of the expenses. I was just putting it on here so that the Board was aware that it takes place each summer. In the past, it wasn't something that was necessarily brought to the Board's attention. So I wanted to make sure that they were aware that the summer band camp takes place and the proposed funds, it's an exchange. Right. The tuition of the students covers the expenses of that program. It doesn't, it shouldn't flow through, right. Thank you.
Okay. Is it a 60, a projection of 60 students or 90 students?
Um, I don't know. I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
The numbers just didn't add up for me. But if you're saying it's.
Yeah, I believe she has 60 on her proposal.
Well, but if you look down at their expenses, it says 90 in this expense area.
Out from a 90 student projection. I will clarify that with the band teachers.
But it's a net zero.
Yes, it is. Yep. It's a wash. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We also run a theater camp that also is a wash. It's been populated for, I don't know how many summers, and band camp, I believe, has been going on for like longer than I've been here at the Daniel Boone Area School District. So I know it's something that the students look forward to, participating in.
Any Board questions?
The question though was, so does that go through payroll or is that considered a separate?
If the music boosters are funding it, Mike and I'll dig into this. We had a question last summer on a program like this to make sure it's handled properly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had, I had asked the music booster president before we came tonight about it. They had no involvement.
Right. No, I don't believe that they do.
We'll make sure the fund from the booster flows through properly and expenditures are made properly.
Let me interrupt for one second. Mr. Matts, could you find out for us what it would cost to modify this system so that all the microphones work at once? Please. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Dazkow.
Yeah, it's okay. I just, so if it runs through payroll, I mean, are they getting, are the teachers getting paid as like teaching summer school and there's Social Security and PISA isn't allowed on that, or are they getting paid as a lump sum because it's an independent issue?
Right.
Okay. Because I think in the future it may bear more discussion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions on programs? Any public, yes, Ms. Sweet.
Hi. I've worked with the band camp for a few years now. Just so you guys know, it probably does cost some money. Everything does. But the high school and middle school, we have a huge involvement. We make it so the school district doesn't have to hire many people. We teach almost all the lessons and then the band directors just kind of oversee it to make sure that we're actually teaching kids with the right staff. So if the expense is a concern, just to reassure you, it's going to be very minimal. I mean, I can answer a question if you're like curious about the actual program since I've done it, I think since it started.
I think, I think it's a nice administrative question.
I wouldn't show you.
Any public comment on programs? Seeing none, we'll move on to policy. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, Mr. Martino, we were supposed to have a policy meeting tonight, but decided to cancel that with the urgency to have the Finance Committee have their presentation tonight. So that was the Trump, the Policy Committee. Our next meeting will be April 13th, unless I can, with the committee, find a date still in March that we can meet to talk about some of the policies we have going on. We have a few type of interest policies that are being reviewed by the solicitor. We have some new candidates for policies to consider going forward. So we've got a big agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Ms. Torsia from Policy Development.
Yes, I wanted to let the Board know that March 11th is the onsite visit from PSBA. They will spend most of the day here at the district. They will review the last three years of Board minutes, copy of existing policies in the policy manual. They will look through a copy of the current collective bargaining agreements. They're going to want to take these things with them, copy of contracts with groups of employees, copy of Act 93 agreement, student parent employee handbooks, one for elementary, one for secondary. They're going to compile all of the things that they are requesting. And then what their projected timeline is, is that they're going to review local Board procedures between June and July, the 100 programs August, September, the 200 programs pupils November, 300 January, 600 in March. So it appears the way that they have their timeline laid out that it will be close to a year and a half before they would be completed.
Thank you, Ms. Torsia. Any other?
I'm beginning to wonder, you know, that seems like a really long timeframe for this. And had I known that that would be the timeframe, I'm not so sure what I signed up for having them, spent the money to have them do this review, I mean, a year and a half. Good Lord, they're coming here to pick this stuff up and we could have emailed it to them six months ago and.
They actually, we will send it to them, but there is a part that they want to come onsite and do with us and that's the first step.
I get that, please. I would think that they would have already read through all the material before showing up.
Not the way they have it laid out, I'm sorry.
I have one comment maybe since the Policy Committee, we already revamped most of 100, I think, over the past couple of years.
100, 200, and 300.
So maybe we could shuffle those to the end and we're either having, you know, skip those or something, or maybe that would accelerate a little bit.
It's still not going to change their start time.
Right. I'll know better after the 11th, after Wednesday.
Plus, there's policies that were, that we feel the need to go forward, like conflict of interest, and it does affect the administrators, the professional employees, and the classified staff. So there are policies that we're going to be developing, you know, drug use going forward, those kind of things that will have an effect on those policies. So it's hard to skip them when, you know, some of the more prudent issues that we're dealing with demand to look at now.
Any other Board questions or comments on policy? Any public comment on policy?
Just one quick request. Is it possible to get that schedule out to the Board or post it somewhere that we can refer to it just so we're not constantly asking you where are we in the process? At least we have the process in front of us.
Yes. Yep, you're welcome.
Moving on to transportation, I don't believe there's anything. Moving on to old business, Mrs. Torsia.
I have, I will be bringing the 2015, 2016 calendar, that would be next year's calendar. What I would like to add is at the bottom is to mark the dates of any in-service days that would be missed as a result of them becoming a snow day and to be able to add them onto the end of the calendar so that the staff know that this would be the dates that they would be making up in service days as they would be missed. So that was the only revision that I was recommending.
Any Board comments or questions? Mr. Kurz, your Long Way to Tax presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martino. Unfortunately, my battery died between the steps with everybody here. But anyway.
The laptop are yours?
Well, my battery's going to die soon too. But anyway, I passed out a spreadsheet of the Daniel Boone Area School District Historical Marriage Data and I am working on a project over my Christmas break of trying to take all of the property tax data from the school districts in Brooks County and compile it so we can see where we fell in comparison to other counties, other districts in the county. And the result is the information in front of you online on the spreadsheet I shared. Take it for what it's worth. There are a few, the data is as accurate as it can be. If you look at the last few digits or the last digit in the hundreds place, it might be off a little bit. This data is from the state directly and incredibly, some of the information submitted to the state, their school districts just didn't submit it some years. So that will affect the county average, but not in any statistically significant way. The Business Office will provide more detailed information if you'd like it. However, I thought this was helpful for me just to see what we felt in comparison to other districts. And we have consistently been above the county average since approximately 2002. So I could try to entertain questions that I thought this and have been a while since I put it together, but I'm just, this is something that I was really interested in when I joined the Board and finally had about five to six, seven hours to put it together and get that information and put it into a spreadsheet. But I thought of the Board members, really quite interesting and very useful and helpful when discussing these topics.
Yeah, that's what I did. Thank you, Mr. Kurz. I did find it interesting. What was even more, I did look a little bit into the numbers. I found it amazing that there are several districts that a couple of them are low in costs, but a couple are higher, but also having mercantile tax in there that they get as well, which is 100%, I believe, of the sales in their business, which, and then they get royalty tax on top of that, and some of those are even higher than ours. And I mean, it's really unfair in the sense that they get the mercantile tax and, you know.
And that's something that the state really needs to address and they just have no desire to, and it's very frustrating. I know we all feel that way and we all need to talk about it ad nauseam, but again, just the information's here if you want it. And of course, you can always check out the more detailed spreadsheet as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurz. Something that I think the Board and the public needs to understand too with property taxes. The last countywide assessment for Brooks County was 1993, I believe, and that was only as a result of a lawsuit.
It was '99.
No, it went into effect later, but it was, the actual assessment was '93. And so homes built at the time of that assessment and before were assessed at the time of the reassessment. Homes built after the reassessment were assessed at market value times a percentage. So there's a great disparity within the school district of how homes, existing and new, are taxed. And I just think that's important for everyone to understand. Is there any Board questions or comments on either the revised calendar or the tax presentation? Any public comment on either topic?
Did you want to put this up on the website somewhere, Mr. Kurz?
Sure. I think that would be good. I would ask the Business Office just if they can to triple check these numbers and make any revisions if necessary. Again, maybe they have access to information that wasn't publicly available on the DCED webpage, but I think that would help put it public, put it under public documents and we might even have a dedicated page for property tax information. So I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Basil.
We need a website too, Mr. Matts, to get more, more crowd than that.
Mr. Small, note that's a triple check, not the.
Triple.
Under New Business, we'll be voting to accept the donations listed and approve an agreement with a disability regarding a disabled child, the graduation date of June 12th with the ring date of the 13th. And I think this is important to discuss for a second, the resolution to overhaul the Elementary and Secondary Education Act currently known as the No Child Left Behind Act. Mrs. Torsia, did you want to just briefly explain what that is?
Briefly, many of the school districts in the county are signing to say that they are against high-stakes standardized testing and that it has negative effects for students from backgrounds, especially for low-income students, English language learners, et cetera, that the school district supports locally developed, authentic assessment as drivers of instruction. School district calls on the Governor and State Legislature and State Education Boards and administrators to reexamine public, to reexamine public school accountability systems in the area and that, you know, that we would just like an overhaul of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And many of the school districts in the county, like I said, have been signing it. So I brought it to, I'm bringing it to your attention to see if you would like to, you know, do the, do the same.
So that's in your package and we'll be voting on that at the next meeting. Is there any public comment on, on the new business?
I just want to thank Mrs. Torsia for bringing that to our attention. It's very timely, because it is a review in Congress. Thanks, Mrs. Torsia.
You're welcome. I also wanted to add, because I know there was question with regard to be, with regard to the agreement with the parents of a child with a disability. This is not new, much like Mr. Small is doing and making sure that our agreements are correct. So is our educational, or our special education lawyer. He's making sure that past agreements are clad so that we can't be sued as a result later. So these are just, they're just letting you know that we're putting into a better agreement.
Mr. Raskin, I believe the power cord just popped out of your laptop. Ms. Ringer, you had comments?
Yeah, just want to say on the resolution, I know a lot of kids are going to walk in violation. Thank you for permitting us to use on that, but for a little braids these sort of like guy. of kids were confused on that, but for like brainwaves or anything like that, will they, graduations always be at our high school or will it be like, could possibly like out for a year or so?
I believe the direction of the school board is that they would like to continue to use our own facility and have it outside. Last year was an outstanding night. It was absolutely beautiful. The board did allow us to go ahead and get the services of a very good sound system. So I believe, from what I understand, people that were sitting up on the hill far away were able to hear each of the speeches very well. So as long as the weather's going to cooperate, we're going to try to stay outside. That's why we put a rain date for Saturday and letting parents know that potentially if it's raining or calling for rain Friday and the prediction is much better for Saturday, then we would have it the next day. So that's the goal, to maximize the number of participants.
Thank you. No, that's okay.
Do you have a preference? Where do your students...
A lot of students say they'd much rather graduate at our school than others.
Okay, good. So we did something right.
Excuse me one second. My stepdaughter graduated from Daniel Boone, not at our school, and she always said she wished she had graduated from school itself.
Yeah, I wanted to do that. Good. Thank you for letting us know that.
In the event we have more snow days, will I...
We're not having any more snow days, Mr. Kurz.
Yes, well, in the event we have more contingencies, will the graduation day move back?
I would prefer to keep it set for that Friday and for us to work directly with the state to do the same thing that we did in the past, to allow the seniors to graduate on time.
And I think it would be something they'll allow this year because I know there were some...
Last year, they came up with a lot of convoluted ideas, but they did everything they could to have graduation take place as scheduled.
Right.
I think also the way the past, we had discussed having Alvernia as a backup in case you had two days of rain.
Right.
So if the consensus of the board and the seniors is that they don't want to come hell or high water, they don't want to graduate anywhere but from Daniel Boone, what's the third date or the fourth date?
Well, I believe if the forecast for two days of rain, if like two years ago, we had tsunami-like rain and it was really bad for three days, we quickly got a contract with Alvernia to be able to go inside because they could better...
I thought last year the vice president was going to have a decision.
We were going to go inside, correct.
But we made a decision.
And that's the only reason why we decided to go to Alvernia, because it was better able to handle our student population. So the idea would be to go back inside and to utilize our facility.
It's also worth noting that we do stream graduation online now, which is an incredible thing for grandparents who may be across the country. Just, that's also out there.
Any other board comments or questions?
I'm not a board member, but I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Torschen, the graduation, is that the PSSA's?
Yes, it's with regard to giving the school districts more local control on their assessments than the state. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Mrs. Kramer in time. Mrs. Kramer had something she wanted to add.
I just want to make a note on here as an agenda edit. Under 14A, third bullet down, the 500 monetary donation from C-Star Solutions for the DBHS TSA, that's actually from Burgeboro Legion, not C-Star Solutions. The high school just notified me of that. They sent me an email.
Thank you.
I'll correct that on the next voting meeting. So it reads that.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Just a note that we are having an executive session following the special voting meeting and Mr. Small, you should be there for the beginning of that because Mr. Raskin has something from the solicitor of the TCC, the tax agency. And after adjournment here, we'll go, adjournment, we'll go right into the special voting meeting. Is there any presentation by the public on any issues not already discussed? Seeing none is our motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
I see the public standing up and stretching. Before we go into the special voting meeting, which will be quick, I want to thank not only everyone for coming, but for the way you conducted yourself. I mean, there were some controversial issues and I know there's some disagreement, but the disagreement was respectful both ways and we appreciate that. Thank you. Moving right into the special voting meeting, Mr. Basil, do we need another roll call? We have everybody here. Are there any attend...